All right, ladies and gentlemen, if everyone would find seats, we will continue. And we will continue, I believe, with a motion from Mr. Mustarala.
Supervisor, I make a motion to end the executive session. No action was taken by the board.
Second.
All in favor? opposed, so moved. Mr. Mustarala, I believe we have a second motion.
Yes, Supervisor, I make a motion to go into a work session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. We are in a work session, the purpose of which is to, uh... I guess, first of all, to get some work done. And to get us started, Councilor, Mr. Sinraich, where are you?
Right here.
I believe you're gonna be the quarterback, so to speak.
My pleasure, thank you very much.
You identify the scope of the work session.
Good morning, Supervisor, good morning, everybody in the board. As you know, I am your outside counsel. And particularly this morning with respect to the urgency request for proposal process that we've been going through to select a temporary operator for the Woodlands concession, basically for the three-month period beginning, hopefully, if you act today, today through December 31st of this year, to permit the town to go through a process to select a long-term permanent operator facility. I was assigned by the town attorney the task of sort of guiding the town through this process as I did with Tappan. And the purpose of the work session today, as I understand it, is first for me to describe to the board the process we have gone through, where we are today. I believe Councilman Simmons will be coming up briefly to discuss the committee meeting that took place yesterday, and then the board obviously has power to discuss and deliberate on that process.
All right, so just to, I guess maybe I'm pulling you pretty clear, just to sum it up, the purpose of this work session is to determine, um... the award, if you will, of a, in response to requests for proposals. We have received a number of proposals.
I'll be describing.
Okay, parties willing to come in and operate the Woodlands between now and December 3rd, now, two including December 31st of 2016.
Actually, I think I made it January 1, 17, and the expectation there would be New Year's parties that we wanted to cover, and we didn't want to leave those flying out there.
Fair enough, but the point is, it's temporary for roughly a three-month period.
So, to describe the process, it began, of course, with the termination of the existing concessionaire. And on September 20th, a letter of final termination was issued by your other outside counsel, the firm acquit Emanuel, which terminated the existing concession agreement effective that day, subject only to a due process hearing, which I'll describe in a minute, which is a constitutional requirement, as you all know, when a town terminates a contractor for cause. So, that termination went out on September 20th. On the same day, and-
Any difference? I want to be close. Words matter. Difference between a licensee and a contractor, this is all-
Yes, technically, all of our concessionaires are licensees because since the concessions are operated on parkland, they can't be leases because to lease parkland, you need an act of the state legislature. So, the practice all over the state, and I represent many other municipalities in this matter, is that concessions are by license, which means they have to be terminable at will. That's what differentiates them from a lease and all of the... But this was terminated for cause, as I'll get to in a second. So, it is a licensee of rights, correctly, Supervisor. So, we terminated the license agreement for cause on September 20th. The grounds for that termination for cause were three earlier letters noticing the continuing defaults of that concessionaire. They were referred to in the termination letter, and that license was terminated on September 20th, subject to the due process hearing, which I'll describe in a minute. On the same day, because unlike Tappan, which is a restaurant, this is also a catering facility with events booked far in advance, and we knew that there were three events that were already scheduled to happen during the week, on the authority of the town attorney's office, who's the chief legal officer, of course, under the town law for the town, I was authorized to, and I did engage Scotto Brothers for the sole purpose of running those three events, because we didn't want to leave any customers and any town residents in the lurch while we did this very, very quick emergency RFP, that's the subject of your deliberations this morning. So, I entered into a letter agreement as your counsel on September 20th, to Scotto Brothers, just to cover three events, a cocktail party on September 22nd, a small business-type presentation on September 23rd, and a golf outing on September 26th. That agreement was countersigned by Mr. Scotto, and it is now terminated. That's all. They did a fine job, they made sure those three events went off well, but that agreement is already terminated, and we're moving on today to the emergency RFP. On September 21st, as I said, we issued an invitation in the termination letter for the present licensee to come in for a meeting, an opportunity to be heard, is the technical language of the case law, as required by the United States Due Process Clause of the Constitution. And the purpose of that is simply to give the about-to-be-terminated licensee the opportunity to be heard and say whatever it chooses to say, you know, with respect to the grounds of the termination. And in fact, such a hearing was held. In the case of Tappan, you might remember, it was waived, but in this case, the licensee did request such an opportunity to be heard. It was held at my office. Commissioner Nocerino presided over, as the commissioner of parks, which was appropriate, of course, and deputy town attorney, Scolara, was also present, and I was present. The licensee appeared by his counsel, as well as a representative of the investor group that was the licensee. They had a full opportunity to be heard with respect to the issues pertaining to the termination. And I will comment, since I was there as your counsel, that nothing they said really even addressed the grounds of the termination itself. They stated their interest in continuing in some way or capacity, which really wasn't the subject matter of that hearing. And after that hearing concluded, I believe that the commissioner reached a conclusion, I think properly, that there was no grounds to reconsider the termination, so a letter went out confirming the termination on that same date following that hearing. On the same day, on September 21st, I then issued a temporary, a request for proposals, a temporary request for proposals on behalf of the town, seeking a temporary operator, temporary licensee to begin today, again, assuming the board acts today through January 1st. It was very similar to the RFP we successfully used in the Tappan situation. It went out to 10 different entities. These entities were selected by me, they included everyone who was included in the earlier Tappan situation, and a few additional proposers, and that went out on the 21st. On the 22nd, at the request of the proposers, there was a walk-through of the facility, so they would have an opportunity to actually walk through it and get a sense of what it is they were being asked to operate. On the 23rd, there was a non-mandatory, but very well-attended proposers' conference held at the Department of Parks. Commissioner Nocerino was there, as well as deputy town attorney, Rosaya, and myself. There were a lot of representatives, pretty much, I think, most of the proposers were present, they had a full opportunity to ask questions, and they did. As a result of that, I think we issued one or two emails, just with some explanatory materials. Proposals were due at my office at noon yesterday, and they were... We received six proposals yesterday at my office. They were forwarded both electronically and by hard copy to a committee of town employees and representatives, the evaluation committee, who met yesterday at 2:00 to review and consider all of these proposals. They had all of the proposals for them. My recommendation, based on our experience with Tappan, I suggested that, although there was a ranking, there was a score sheet that was distributed for the committee members... By the way, the committee consisted of Commissioner Nocerino, Commissioner Betts, John Bishop, Christine Wiss, and Leonard Simmons. And Mr. Rosaya was also present, who was counsel, I believe, as a non-voting member to legally guide the process, I unfortunately did not myself.
Just for the record, it's, uh... There is a former councilman, Leonard Simons.
I apologize, Mr. Simons.
No apology.
But comes from being a sub-city boy, Supervisor. So, Mr. Simons basically chaired that meeting. And as I say, there was a scoring sheet that was used, as you know, and I advise you legally, those scores are not public, are not public, they're intra-agency deliberations. But the scoring took place, and my advice, based on my experience with this board at Tappan, was rather than making a single recommendation, I suggested, and the committee agreed, that they would choose three recommended proposers. Of course, the board is free to choose whoever you want, you're not bound by that. There were three recommended proposers that I suggested we present to the board, and at this point, I would suggest I turn it over to Councilman Simons, who can describe a little more detail that process.
Counselor Simmons, would you? I think everybody knows former town councilman Leonard Simons, who served this town very well for a very long period of time on this town. How long, your name?
Just for the, uh... Just for the record, it's Leonard Simons, former councilman, current deputy commissioner, and chief forecaster of the town voice of Bay Harbor Center.
What's it gonna do in the next hour?
It's about to clear out. Supervisor, you mentioned a moment ago that you use the phrase, "Words matter," and they do, and the process matters, and it does. So, I want to, I want to share to the board and all the interested parties here what the process was that I participated in along with this committee. I received a phone call that a meeting would take place on this RFP, which is a quality-based selection process, procurement process. We're not, we're not buying here a set of tires or a set of batteries. Buying somebody who is, has expertise in the food industry and the service industry. When I received that phone call, I was told the time and a place. That's it. I wasn't told who the committee members were, nor did I ask. I wasn't told who the applicants were, nor did I ask. When I appeared at the selected time and place, which was yesterday at 2:00 at Town Hall South, it was the first time that I met my colleagues that Mr. Sinraich has already identified. At that time, and only at that time, to all of us, were the identity of the applicants shared. And that really started the process, if you will. We were handed several proposals by each of the applicants, and what we did was, in each instance, we read, digested, and discussed each of those applications. Now, the discussions were really centered around the work, the rating sheets. So, this wasn't... We weren't asked individually, "What do you think of this one, and what do you think of that one?" It was substantive discussions. It was in detail. We spent some, at least three hours, going over these various applications and the various proposals. I would describe the discussions as fair, open, transparent, and certainly, most certainly, worthy of the public trust. Ultimately, I think what I'd like to do here for a moment is share the criteria, because I think that's important for everybody to know, what was the process, what we went through, what we considered. Number one was the firm's overall capabilities, and that included size, staffing, resources, financial capability relative to the size of the assignment. And in this particular case, the assignment was not only catering, but it also had to address golfers. So, a golfer coming in after 18 holes of golf, or getting out early in the morning and playing nine holes of golf, wasn't particularly interested in what type of sushi that was being served. There was a... So, there was two populations that the applicants were addressing, special knowledge relative to the project, and special equipment or facilities relative to the project. Then, of course, we got into the firm's experience, experience of the firm and assignments of similar size, scope, and complexity. Knowledge and experience of town facilities and programs involved in the assignment and knowledge of town philosophy, practices, procedures, and any past performance that the applicant had with the department. The third area, organizational ability, the magnitude, scope, complexity of the services to be rendered, the firm's current workload with the town, if any, time constraints and deliverability of the service, since we need to bring somebody in rather quickly, and of course, as Mr. Sinraich indicated, it's a fixed time period with an end time at the end of the year, January 1st. So, the discussions took place on all of these various objective criteria. When it came time to vote, we were given rating sheets. The vote was taken independently. It was the vote, the actual numbers that we assigned to each of these criteria was not discussed at that time. We did so privately, we did so efficiently, and we handed those rating sheets in, and that's how we came to the bottom line of the, of three of the top choices that we recommended to the board. And again, as Mr. Sinraich indicated, these are recommendations the board served, they're not bound by the town to consider all of, all of the applicants. We did submit the top three. But again, I think that the, that the process itself, I used the term before, worthy of public's trust, it was an excellent process, and one I think I wanted to share with the board as to how we can do our conclusions.
Welcome.
First, I want to, you know, thank the meeting that we're forward you for acting so quickly and giving us information that we need to make a decision. You mentioned, let me, that everybody is capable, fully capable, the three recommendations that you presented to us, you feel strongly that all, all three of them are fully capable of doing the job we need to do.
I do, I do. Each person, of course, obviously waits the criteria differently. So, but there were nuances, but in response to your question, most definitely all three.
Counselor, can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sorry.
No, I understand, it's only, it's really just from now to the end of December, and we're looking at this.
Keep in mind, yeah, I'm not trying to spike it. It is January 1, John?
Yes. The top three, by the way, which I failed to share, Carlisle, Lessings, and Scotto.
No order.
No particular order. No particular order.
Counselor, did we go looking through best labor practices of the restaurants, or any fines they had, or not paying the wages, not paying the minimum wage, or anything else?
We certainly discussed vetting all of the applicants, and again, a number of criteria. That was discussed, yes.
Was it discovered? Not the name of anyone that was discovered, but was anything discovered by your committee?
No, no, not at least at the time, not at least at the time we met.
Okay, thank you.
We've had issues with others getting up to speed and whatnot. We've had issues with liquor licenses and things of that nature, so maybe look at that.
Yes, yes, that was, that actually is, I believe, brought that to our attention. That is a critical issue, getting up to speed, getting-
I don't think we've shown that that it is, but we've had the looks.
Yes, with getting off the ground. We have been assured by, by certainly the top three that we've chosen, that they can do what they have to do quickly, efficiently, and professionally.
And be fully operational, and no issues with liquor licenses, or any other questions?
Lenny? Excuse me, Councilman, sorry. What about things that aren't quantifiable by this? I mean, I know you had to use a metrics of some type and get it down to numbers, but as the only one up here who's ever been a bride, there are things that sort of don't fall into these categories, you know, like something that's unique or different, and I would love to see the facility become a really competitive place in the marketplace, a place that brides say, "Oh, my God, did you hear I was able to get my wedding there?" You know, "Did you have a feeling?" I don't need to put you on the spot.
We did, for example, marketing, improvements to the facility that may be needed, all of that was discussed and addressed by this committee. While we had the criteria, we weren't bound solely by this criteria. Now, that was the focus, but in response to your question, most definitely-
So, the top three includes those type of things in your mind?
Absolutely, absolutely.
The only question I would, another question I had was, um... Only one of those three made reference to a monthly fee and expenses as heat electric and electricity.
Yes.
Are they, are they, are they all, are all the fees that are mentioned that come through the town include that, or is that on top of what they-
You mean the heat, electric, these additional factors? My recollection is that only one made that proposal to the town.
So, it was the monthly fee plus factor, and the other ones are all included in it?
Well, the heat electric wasn't parsed out separately. One applicant talked about the monthly fee plus, paying some additional cost.
So, what's the understanding for everybody else that this included?
I can't answer that. That's, obviously-
So, we can't make any assumptions on that?
The RFP clearly required the operator to pay its own utilities, that was already in the RFP, it didn't have to be addressed, that's an element of any contract you enter into would be successful.
Okay, so when we, when we did the polls and giving us what their monthly fee would be, we're going to just assume it's the monthly fee plus?
Correct, and that is in the RFP.
Counselor, I'll tell you what impressed me. When I went through them all, there was a, it's not a science, obviously, different evaluators would come up with a different score and whatever, but I was amazed at the consistency. It truly was consistent. The higher number, consistently go to the same person. The grades were almost the same across the board. It was always like as if there was some objectivity involved, but, you know, clearly there wasn't, and all using our discretion, so obviously, a lot of forewarning to us, and I'm gonna say, it was easy and obvious to answer, but the fact that there was that kind of consistency, you know, creates repose in our minds that, wow, you know, they must have gotten it right.
We took a lot, we took a lot of time, and we took our responsibility very seriously.
Okay, the one thing I wanted to ask you, I know we're not, we don't always have the wherewithal, just new background checks and things of that nature, we're not investigators, and I don't even know if we even have wherewithal to do it internally, but I seem to remember there was some discussion about, and Jonathan, I'll look to you, all right, Jonathan, I need to be honed, I need to... Is any of this subject to any further searches, or any further, anything in the way of background checks, or anything of that nature? Or are we satisfied that everybody's good to go?
Supervisor, what I've recommended, we just didn't have time to do all that in the very compressed time, is that once this board selects a final proposer, we will require that proposer to make that kind of disclosure as a condition to the contract.
Okay, how would that, I'm not trying to be difficult, so, um...
We're not, we're not gonna be able to independently vet it, we're gonna ask for a disclosure, which would be a warranty and a representation by the contractee, licensee. That's really all we can do for this three months.
Yeah, no, I'm not being unreasonable, but so, so any choice we make today would be subject to that further-
As part of the contract.
Did we discuss that?
Hold on, it sounds like you did, there are questions.
By the way, I, I think I misspoke earlier, because I went back and looked at the RFP, and let me tell you what the RFP says about utilities specifically, because I want to be correct about that, I wasn't. The town will provide you utilities, which was apparently the prior situation, except telephone. So, that has been, is the town's responsibility. I do want to say I apologize if I'm interrupting you, but I want to emphasize, I think it's very important, that we worked a lot, obviously, off the existing agreement. The town now has an opportunity, there's only gonna be a three-month agreement in the context of a long-term and permanent agreement, which I strongly recommend, we get going immediately to consider all of these issues of fraction, that, you know, we will do that. But for this three months, we are sort of bound to what we have, and that's where we are.
Yeah, I guess largely because the temporary awardee, or temporary licensee is gonna be somewhat, have that dam start to some extent.
Right, and one of the things we, we made a, you know, conscious decision, where we are not requiring, obviously, any improvements to be made in those three months, because that would not be reasonable. This is really to get us through the next three months, make sure that all of the events that are already scheduled are properly handled, while the town goes to the real effort of finding a long-term.
I want to mention looking at prospectus.
That's right.
That's what the business is all about.
In light of Mr. Sinraich's remarks, one applicant, one applicant added additional payments to the town, that that normally in the RFP, we would assume.
But there was one applicant who said, "I'll take on the utilities," that's the way I would-
Yes.
Okay, that's what we're going with, that's right. Okay, well, the board has to, and I guess, I guess, Len and Jonathan, you could, maybe you both stand up here with us? We're kind of at decision time here, I think. We have two, we have a resolution on today's calendar, which has a blank in it, and the blank is the name of the- blank is the name of the temporary licensee at the Woodlings. And we need to fill in that blank before we proceed to the call of the regular action calendar. That was really the bottom line of this work session. So I think that has to happen now, which the board has to arrive at publicly, arrive, I believe we have to do it publicly.
Yes, we do.
Being mindful, I guess, of whatever confidences were, should not be disclosed, properly disclosed, especially in the interest of the applicant, we call the applicants prospective licensees. And I guess we have to arrive now publicly at a consensus as to what should be done here.
As long as we're being taught by the committee that everybody, the three that's being recommended are all fully capable of handling the next three months, I'm looking at the highest value we can get. And what I'm hearing, from what I'm hearing, that there's left some things with the far exceed the rent that we'd be getting from the other two applicants. So because of that, I'd be looking for lessons to put together.
All right. Mine, I'm sorry. My, my gut feeling was that there's a lot that goes into this, obviously, like, it is also, I guess, what I'll call, quality of life. And sometimes you have to just have a knee-jerk reaction, a kind of a, that's not the right word, chemical reaction to us, right? I think we've all attended establishments, I see hands going up, but we won't be taking any questions after the work session. But we're free to take questions afterwards in public, Senator.
Something the work section worked last time.
I was actually surprised that, I would raise this to our gathering, there was a particular, particular applicant that I kinda had a leaning towards based upon personal experiences there. But when I step back and look everything over, when you look at the depth of what's involved here, especially in terms of long-range planning, I would too, I also look at one of the three recommendees, if you will, but my instinct tells me that, I think Scott Brothers was the one that really had just more substance as depth, especially if we're serious about the long haul and making this a, some of these councilmen's work, a very competitive establishment. I'm sorry, Jonathan.
Supervisor, if I may say, you really respectfully can't be considering the long haul here. Because a long haul is gonna have to be completely competitive, we can't give any benefit to whoever gets the three months.
No, no, I understand, I understand, I'm only doing it until January first, I get it. But I can't help as the town supervisor, in such light of the past history, looking for someone who has depth and who has ability, and I would like to see what they can do over there. No, 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 let me qualify, let me say, I'd like to see what they had to do over the next three months. Doesn't mean they're gonna be back on January second by any stretch. You know, keep in mind, when you're selected to do this, it could work one of two ways. You could fulfill the expectation, or you could fall flat on the face. But I would, I would be really interested in seeing Scott Brothers work in the next three months and what they're capable of. That would be my, that would be my call.
To follow up, Councilman Pinto's calculations, I think, if I recall correctly, it was Scott Brothers who were willing to pay some additional cost, and I think you have to add that.
Yeah, but if I add it.
All right, yeah, as long as you did.
I just wanted to clarify, the lessons monthly is twenty-five thousand more than the Scott's monthly, so there's a lot of room there to take the direction we operate there. Most likely, it's a percent more for sales, for customers, and then, so we're not going to be the same.
Well, it's the towards, it's towards.
My gut feeling is the transition is crucial here, because it's gotta be four, it's gotta be move-in, operate, get it done herein, satisfy the customer, the owner, the tax payer. And I would go with Scott, because of the productivity, the quality, the versatility, whatever, the way they operate, that is operation. I don't know the others, but I, that's my gut feeling.
I'll be caught out with you. We gave the Carlisle group a shot up at Tappan Beach, and basically, they hit down in the park and did a great job. Heard no complaints from the residents. That'd be my gut feeling, they did a good job up at Tappan Beach this summer. That's my gut feeling.
So I'm viewing it, I feel like more like a consumer than like a, I wish my brain worked a little bit more like Councilman Pinto, in my process, you know, from a financial standpoint, but I just, I feel like, you know, the place that I've gone and the things I've seen and looking at the proposals, I actually like an outlier that wasn't one of the top three. You guys, anybody else have any, I don't understand who it was. Anybody else have any feeling about anyone who wasn't in the top three? So I'm alone in that.
I actually did.
You did? Wanna see if they're the same?
It wasn't, it wasn't Love and Oviedo.
I don't know if we get Love and Oviedo.
Do you, the board can pick whoever.
I haven't liked Love and Oviedo.
I was gonna say, I'd like Love and Oviedo, I've been to their places in the city, and I just, I feel like they're really fresh and different.
I did too, but I was looking for, again, and I, I, I was looking for more meat on the bone, so to speak, looking for more depth, and I wanna use this three-month period to see if that depth was there.
Also, you could consider, obviously, somebody local enough, in the work section.
Considering the population they need to serve, the employee pool, et cetera.
Financial strength, and obviously, they weren't actually the top three, on the recommendation.
You love it up.
Yeah, no, I agree, I got it.
The financial strength of the corporation.
Well, I'm kind of balancing between, I would say, again, going back to sort of the aesthetics of the proposals, sort of between Lessing and Scotto. I mean, Scotto, when I got married years ago, was like the gold standard, you know, the gold standard, not to put any of the other proposals down, it was just that was the, you know, how to think, you could have a wedding, I don't know.
So your bottom line is?
On between, the twixt and between.
I started helping us, we need to know.
Well, Leonard, because I haven't spoken yet, and what it's worth, I'd go with Lessing. I'm pretty much similar to the Councilman, I'd go with Lessing, I guess. I know, can't believe I said that.
I guess we can't close the work session without knowing, I guess, we've got a.
I'm sorry, is my break her?
Well, I don't know, I don't wanna put that kind of pressure on you, I, what are the rules? But I think we need to follow it.
I don't know what we have, what do we have?
Lessings, Carlisle, Scotto, Scotto, Lessings. They got two, two and, oh, we don't, we don't have the show either. How does that impact on them?
You guys are gonna have to, so the two highest, Lessings and Scotto.
You got, let me do it again, you got two Lessings, one Carlisle, and two Scottos. Rebecca, for example, would go Lessings. We would have two across the board.
No, we'd have three back on Lessing.
I'm sorry, three.
It's only temporary.
Yeah, temporary.
See, I had a question, and I don't get, kind of most of that, yes, I believe it's temporary too, but since it's temporary, let's bring in the most ready we can, and then we'll go out for the RFP for the future, maybe other people catch up. But let them understand that they can make a little blow, and they may wanna catch up.
Of course, and like everything else, in a qualifications-based selection procurement, the studies of that reveal that obviously, money is considered, but it's not cheaply considered. It's the billing.
That's why, that's why I asked if you put everybody the same capability, but you freed up on your poll. That's why, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make this conclusion if you said no.
Councilman, I mean, it's just my personal opinion, but I did put together the entire list. There are no one on that list I don't think is fully qualified to do the job.
Who is what?
Who is not fully qualified to do the job. They are all top-ranked, experienced, they all have the discipline, experience. Really, and I agree, it's an example of a town, you know, lessens, there's always the gut, you know, who are you gonna go on with, who's, who's going to do the town proud, but that's something of a psychological, private choice. So all things being equal. Four of you need to, we need four of you ultimately to do it.
So all things being equal, then, as you stated, we go with the most prime, right?
I'm not gonna go there, that's no use, that's how you guys have to decide. I'm confident whoever you pick from that.
I think, I think capability, capability, when we say everyone is capable, that capability should not, is not synonymous with necessarily synonymous.
So the quality.
Well, yeah.
So, Counselor, why don't we take the two that got the most votes, and just see, you know, who gets.
Well, I don't know why, I don't know, I don't know how I would do that, I guess I could do something.
I don't know the other way to do it.
Well, ultimately, it's gotta, we're gonna need four votes ultimately, I don't know how we're gonna do this, this kind of thing.
But we just made recommendations, you're, obviously, you have the decision.
No, I know, what I'm saying is, if two of them got more votes than the others, maybe now it boils down to two of the three, and maybe we can select one of the two.
That makes sense to me, I'm not voting there.
Or you can just take the two highest vote.
Scott.
That's fine, if that, I would look for guidance if, I don't wanna be criticized.
Every four is your, but that does make certain amount of lie.
Well, you're saying because if Carl, for example, has one vote, and that can't be the winner in order, right? I think that's what we're trying to. Well, then, we'd be up to tell you if he wants to, he may wanna stand for Carl on principle, or, I believe it often is to whether or not he wants to change the vote. Do you hear what they're saying?
I hear what they're saying, this sounds more substantial than a town board. But, yeah, given that scenario, I have to agree with Councilman Cash Gano Pinto, I would put a little more money for the three months and go with Lessing.
So now you got three Lessings, am I right? You have three Lessings, two Scottos, we await Rebecca, and then I guess, how we get her herself, she got a briefing and then.
She recused herself.
She recused herself. Oh, interesting, interesting. I see. Okay, then Rebecca.
I hold the Scotto company in the highest regard, and I, but I would like to see what Lessing is gonna be for the three months that we have, so I'll get ahold of them.
That's it? So you got four, two Lessings, and we're done.
You're gonna have to, that obviously is.
Well, I may have to do that, okay.
That would be something in my west wing, just to show them that we would like to screen on that.
Thank you very much.
Another one, great job, guys.
Councilman, thank you, and your committee.
I just wanna know whose contract was canceled.
Um.
Who's contract was canceled?
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna take a brief recess, we'll be back.